Very much. Our April 11th meeting, could you all please rise? For the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to call Reverend Hunt forward to give us our invocation. And thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, Your Honor. Give it honor to this august body and to all the residents of Moni. I just wanted to make a few announcements if I could, and for Moni Alliance of Churches, just want to invite everyone to our National Day of Prayer on May 3rd. It's a Thursday at 7:00. It'll be at New Hope Christian Community Church, 4700 West Court Street.
Thank you.
All right, let's pray. Wonderful and gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to be here on today. For today is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Now, Lord God, we just pray your blessings over all the members of this body, the mayor and all the officers, to all the audience and the residents of this great village of Moni. Blessed, Lord God, that we might come together, that we might reason together as we go over the issues, the problems and opportunities of Moni, Lord God. Help us to have a oneness of heart and spirit and of mind, that sometimes that we may disagree, but help us to do it in love. Help us to do it not for blind ambition, but for the good of all. Oh, Lord, we thank you for all that you're doing, all that you've done in this wonderful community. And as we go forth, Lord God, we just pray your favor over all those who are here, Lord God, over the works that you're getting ready to do. For eye have not seen, ear have not heard, nor has it entered into the heart of man what you have for this village. Bless it in the mighty way. Bless this meeting and the proceedings. Bless the choices that each and every person in this meeting makes. All these things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus and all the people said. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Mayor.
Trustee Holston?
Present.
Trustee Horn? Trustee Raisik?
Present.
Okay, we'll now move to open to the public. Agenda items only. If anyone wishes to make a comment about our agenda, please come forward. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at it. When someone is ready, I'd like a motion and a second to vote on that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Move on to the clerk's report.
No report tonight.
Okay, I have one item on mine. I will admit that I've had this for over a month, but I get so many mailings. And if you saw my desk, you'd know, I'm a real orderly guy. Yeah, right. Anyway, this comes from the Will County Center for Community Concerns. And you're all welcome to take a copy of this or more if you wish. Will County Center for Community Concerns is a local community action agency that has served Will County residents since 1987. Our mission is to assist and enable low and moderate income individuals to obtain the opportunities needed to prepare themselves for self-sufficiency. One of our programs, one of the programs our organization uses to work towards this mission is called L-I-H-E-A-P. Laheep. Income Home Energy Assistant Program. That program is a home energy assistance program that helps income-eligible households pay home energy bills. It also offers two options of assistance. Eligible persons can receive a one-time direct payment of their energy bills directly to the vendor, or they can be enrolled in a program where they receive continuous monthly assistance. And that's called P-I-P-P. And if it had an O in the middle, it'd be POP. But I don't know what I, P-I-P-P means. Our goal in sharing this information with you is to reach out to residents of the village of Moni who may be in need of services but are not aware of our programs. Please see the enclosed informational flyer. Feel free to share this information as you see fit. We welcome all eligible residents to apply. So what I'm saying is, I have multiple copies here. If you know a friend or a neighbor that's in need, and I believe the Reverend will probably take a few, because he has a following, may I say, so I'll put them, they'll be where you signed in tonight. So as you leave, if you wish to take a copy, be my guest, okay? We're here to help. And if they can help you out, great. I know we had a roofer come into the community, he put a roof on a house at no charge, a person that was in need. And that was really generous. And that happened to be the contractor that put the roof on the creamery free of charge. And I won't advertise for him. So that's the end of my report. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda under my report is item H1, and that is a test well, the test water well bid results and the intent to award. On April 6th, we opened the bid results for a test water well. And attached to your report there is a tabulation of those bids, a recommendation letter from our engineering firm, the bidding review certification, and the notice of intent to award. Unfortunately, the bid amount was higher than was anticipated. And there are a couple of notes as to some possible reasons for that being, one certainly reflects back to the recent tariffs that were imposed on imported steel. But there are several other things as well, and I believe that's reflected in the engineer's award letter. However, after review of the finances, we are going to recommend that we proceed with the test well, and that is in accordance with our IEPA loan application. The amount that we will talk about here is reimbursable upon successful application and award of the IEPA loan to the municipal, municipal water supply here. And the bid amount, the award amount was in the amount of $219,758.00. And at this point, we would ask that the action to be taken is to allow the, award the bid of two Municipal Well and Pump Incorporated in the amount of $219,758. And also to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign any related documents in the execution of this award. That is our request. Before we get to that, I would like to explain that if this board approves the award, it also includes the intent to award. So in other words, once you approve the bid amount here, it goes to the IEPA for their approval, because it's all under the encompassment of the IEPA loan. Once they approve that, the bid is considered awarded at that point. It will not be back before this board. After checking with finance, we, this is a reimbursable amount, number one. And number two, after checking with finance, there is and will be sufficient funds to handle this amount in the upcoming fiscal year 2019 budget.
Need a motion? Do we need a motion for this?
You do.
Yeah, I need a motion, please. Then we'll get into discussion if you wish.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll move into discussion. Anybody have any questions about this?
I've got several. What's the length of time you expect the IEPA loan application to take for approval?
That is, we believe that it will be along the six-month timeframe. It just depends as to, you know, other submissions by other communities throughout the state and how they administer that. We are in queue with them as we speak.
Okay. And I understand reading the Robinson Engineering Letter dated April 9th, 2018, that they say, please note the award is conditional upon review and approval by the IEPA. That's exactly what you just said, correct?
It is correct, yes, sir.
That's it, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn? Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent? Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes, I have it here.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Trustee Holston?
Thank you very much. Next item on my agenda, item H2, is the Village Hall remodel, the washroom ADA compliant, compliance factor that we're working on here. And attached is a cost estimate from the architects that provide for the completion of the hallway remodel, safety upgrades as it pertains to the cashier position as you walk in the front, and ADA compliant washroom upgrades. And this item is budgeted both in this year, partially in this year and in next year, in the projected budget. The projected amount, I believe, was eighty-five, $82,827.90. We're asking permission to go out to bid. And upon successful bidding, those results will be back before this board for an award of that bid.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, a second?
Second?
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik? Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Trustee Holston?
Thank you. And that concludes my report for right now. I will have some comments on other items on this agenda.
Okay, we'll move on to officials' report. Trustee Gray, Public Works?
The one thing I have tonight, I will reiterate, as I spoke last week, PT Farrell is out on the Egyptian Trail framing the sidewalks, actually started the concrete today. Again, they're out there seven in the morning. I get stuck at it too, just either be patient or just take a few seconds to go Route 50 to Moni Manhattan Road if you're going out that way. But we are continuing to beautify Egyptian Trail, which we started, you know, two years ago. But again, hopefully with the weather, unlike the Cubs, they actually work in snow. I had to do it. It should be done within two and a half months. So they are out there working every morning. Just please either be patient or, again, skip Egyptian Trail for five minutes and go Route 50 to Altamoni at Merle. End of report.
Sure you had a slip in a little shot at the Cubs, huh, buddy? White sock fan? Okay. I like both of them. I'm more of a Cub than a sock, though. Anyway, okay, we'll move on to Parks and Recs. I'm going to ask Di if she has anything. Diana, would you have anything to say since we're short a trustee right now? We don't have enough people in the community, so I have to look around yet.
The newsletter should be in everyone's mailbox next week. And our most recent event that'll be coming up is the community-wide garage sale, which will be May 11th and 12th. You can come here to the Village Hall and pick up the application for $5 that would put you on the map that we pass out and would publish. So those are the events that are coming up. Keep an eye out for that newsletter that'll be coming, and hopefully we can get it up on our splash page website. That's it. End of report.
Thank you, Diana.
I did have one comment to make on the newsletter, that Diana's doing a great job on it. And someone asked me about costs the other day. And with all of the work that she's done in getting a cheaper service but is still retaining the quality, she's cut the cost by almost half. So she's done a really great job. Well done.
Nice job.
We'll move on to finance. Trustee Holston?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to volunteer to take over the Parks and Recreation next year.
Let's talk to Diana about that one, I think.
Well, we'll put you on a committee called Left Out.
Yeah, thank you.
Not really.
Finance Committee met Monday. We do have a budget that we are recommending to the exec, to the board. We have a public hearing scheduled on the last meeting of the month at 6:00. The budget that we are recommending is subject to final action tonight in executive meeting on personnel items. Once we've gone through that, we should be able to finish it together. We'll put the final touch on it next Monday. That'll be our last public hearing before the budget is approved or reviewed in the public hearing on, I believe that's the 27th?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you. Twenty-sixth at 6:00 will be the public hearing for the budget. But we will have a finance committee next Monday at 4:00. End of report.
Thank you very much. Economic Development, Trustee Blue?
No report today, Mayor.
Unbelievable. Thank you, Janet. Building Services, I'll just make one comment, because Doug Horn's not here. We had about a two-hour meeting today on a building that's, we've already approved, that's going to go up along Ridgeland Avenue. So trying to get construction laid out on what to do with the highway and all that. So you don't believe the work that goes into any project we get, going through the state and every other committee. I always remember when I first became a trustee, I talked about the safe sidewalk that was going to be put in within a year. I, what's that, IDOT or something, David? Who was to put that in? You remember? IDOT. So three years later, it was done. So now I learn to modify what I say about projects. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to clarify, the finance chairman wants to hold a meeting on April 16th, that would be next Monday. Could I ask the time of that meeting?
4:00.
4:00, thank you. And additionally, for trustee Horn, on April the 16th, there is a building committee meeting scheduled, and I believe that meeting was scheduled at 6:30. Information only. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to public safety. Trustee Raisik?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we'll move on to attorney's report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Grzuszkiewicz?
Thank you. I have four items for the board's consideration and a fifth item that won't need any direction from the board, but just for information. The first item is an ordinance, repealing ordinance on, or 1834. This deals with the wastewater charge that's been imposed, the increase that took place, I believe about a month, month and a half ago. We amended the ordinance, the next ordinance will amend the rates, but this ordinance, all this does is repeal the one that was adopted last board meeting.
I make a motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Eighteen thirty-six.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 2A, Section 1D, subsection 1. This is the new wastewater rates that will be in effect as of March 1st, 2018. What we amended was basically the, I believe, the minimum charge. I know Administrator Wallace and DJ reviewed the numbers, I believe, and I think we're in sync right now. So this ordinance, again, will, the rates will be effective March 1st, 2018.
And this is based upon the Aqua increase, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion?
Second.
Did we have a motion? I'm sorry. Did you motion, David?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
You go ahead.
I have a question for Larry. You mentioned that this would be taking place from March the 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason for having?
Partly because what happened, the order that took effect with the ICC, we didn't have enough time to get it into effect at that point in time. They didn't give any village or anybody else a lot of room in order to get this ordinance passed. So we don't want any lapse of payment from the user to the village. Otherwise, we're losing some money. So that's the reason for being effective March 1st, 2018.
Isn't there something ethically wrong to tell someone that they're paying for something and, oh, by the way, it's more expensive and we're going to back charge you?
Well, it happens often when it comes to utility rates. I know Chicago has tried to adopt a policy, they give at least six months, I believe, when they increase their water rates. In this situation, though, the ICC made that decision, there's not a lot of time for the customers to react. So it's happened before, hopefully it won't happen again. But unfortunately, the timing, from that standpoint, we didn't have much of a choice.
Okay, thank you.
And we did appeal this. Appeal was overruled?
We filed a...
Objection?
Pardon me?
We filed an objection, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. We filed an objection. Our appearance was on file. I did receive notice last week that they're asking for a rehearing. Some defendants have asked for a rehearing. Whether that be grants or not, I can't say. They're asking for a rehearing with respect to the rate, that the calculation might have been inaccurate. But it has not been granted. But there was a lot of objection to it, but the ICC did make that ruling.
So we're on two-month cycle, correct? So you're asking for March-April timeframe billing, which as trustee Blue indicated would be almost after the fact, since April's almost over. Do we know approximately what the cost to the village would be if we were to put this off until May 1st? Additional cost?
I don't have that in front of me. It would be $2.25 per thousand gallons of water treated. We're probably in the 100,000-gallon range, just under the 100,000-gallon range. It fluctuates somewhat, but the, that is per month. Couple of things that go on here is Aqua bills monthly. We bill every two months. The actual ruling came out for the 16th of March. We have no way to bill mid-cycle.
Understand that.
And that's why...
I'm just asking what it would cost the village if we decided to wait till May 1st? Do we know that, Daryl?
Yeah.
I mean, again, it's, I kind of agree with trustee Blue, it's not ethically right to do this after the fact, which is when this is. We've not notified the public. Wasn't right for Aqua to do it to us, and it's not right for us to do it to the village and to the people of the village. However, it does, somebody's going to have to pay for it. And so that's why I think it's important to have an idea of what the cost is. So what if we put this off for two more weeks and find that out?
I mean, that's doable. The next board meeting would be...
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth of April. Oh, twenty-sixth of April. Yes, maybe at that point in time, too, we'll have some further direction from the ICC.
Based upon that, I move to table.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
Can't have a discussion.
There is no discussion. I'm sorry?
No discussions allowed.
All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
April 26th?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is, let me see, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 1, Sections 2 and 5. This basically has to do with our garbage pickup and refuse pickup, I believe it is. What we're asking the board is establishment for a non-payment, what the ramifications would be for individuals who fail to pay a bill. The village would have the right to either issue a citation for non-compliance or to file complaint at law seeking money due to the village, including late fees and attorney fees. It appears as though there's some delinquent bills out there, not many, but this would at least give the board, sorry, the village, the right to, you know, try to relieve that obligation to the village.
Any motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Anyone discussing? If not, roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
That'll be eighteen thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grzuszkiewicz. I'll move on to, oh, what's matter?
Just one last one, I forgot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it'll go right ahead. The last ordinance is an ordinance establishing late fees. Once again, what we're attempting to do is recoup some of our costs, meaning the village's costs. So we're asking for a late fee of 1.5% on all outstanding statement of accounts. Again, this, sometimes we have a situation where a person or a company, for that matter, fails to make a timely payment. We're asking to impose a 1.5% late charge to statement of accounts.
Motion, please?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. No discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
And that is eighteen thirty-eight.
Okay, we'll move on to old business, payment to Moni Fire Protection District for a new apparatus.
Yes, Mayor, I can comment on that. If the board would recall, at the last meeting, we brought this item up for discussion. And now it's on the agenda for possible action. Under an agreement with the Moni Fire Protection District, the municipality agreed to pay the sum of $600,000 toward the purchase of a new fire apparatus. In doing so, the village has made their first payment previously of $200,000. Currently, the remaining amount is $400,000. That is being paid out of a TIF district. And it is before you to make a decision after checking with finance. We have all the obligations being able to be fulfilled in that TIF district in the upcoming year. And we are asking permission to pay the entire amount, which would, of $400,000, which would relieve any future liability from the municipality on that account.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
A couple things, Mr. Mayor. As the administrator said, I have reviewed, the finance did review this, this is in the TIF budget. I also reviewed it with Chief Neyland, who said this would save him a substantial amount of interest, which I think is to the benefit of the village to work with the fire department so that they can take advantage of the TIF, in essence, this much as well.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Move on to new business. At this ti, Creamery Architect. I'd like to call, if you, go ahead, Mr. David.
Thank you, Mayor. I can speak to that. Before the board, item L2, under the new business, you have a proposal for architectural services for the Creamery building. The Historical Society has worked diligently to put together a vision plan, a use plan to have the Creamery evaluated... evaluated by a structural engineer. And now, we're at the point of moving to the next step, which would be the engage the services of a professional architect in which to ultimately end up with construction drawings on that facility. Before you, you have a proposal from Andrew Partak Jr. And we're proposing that this is kind of a pay-as-you-go type of situation. Mr. Partak, hourly rate is $150 per hour. And his anticipated number of hours to complete this project would be between 90 and 100 hours. And so, it is our suggestion, as you can see on page three of his submittal, to start the process, he is requesting an initial payment in the amount of $2,000. And we feel that he will move expeditiously and get through that amount fairly quickly. And staff is suggesting we raise that amount to $6,000 so that we don't have to come back before this board, every board meeting or every month or whatever the case may be. I would like to follow up to say that I did check with the L-N Department of Professional Standards and Regulations. And Mr. Partak is certainly up to speed on licensing and has zero complaints against him in his, I believe it's a 35-year span of work.
We have a motion, please?
So, moved?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. If we're expecting him to do between 90 and 100 hours, why can't our motion include spending up to that $15,000 or whatever amount we put on it so they don't have to come back every time to get invoices approved? If we're already saying it's going to cost that and he's going to do... It's going to be 90 to 100 hours. That would be my recommendation, unless there's something you can think of that we should do that.
I'll amend my motion. You need a second, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Additional discussion? Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Can I have additional discussion?
Sure, certainly.
Again, we... Several years ago, we passed a, I think it was a resolution supporting the Creamery. There is $25,000 in this year's budget, so this would come out of that. This also sets the Creamery up for them to be self-sufficient. And I believe, I'm not sure if the next time we're going to talk about is a agreement between them, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll just be quiet until then, then. We can discuss that next.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
You're probably not going to like this, but I'm trying to figure out how our Public Works Department is trying to get at least some vehicles that can get up and running. And we had this meeting and pretty much got beat up on it because finance was like, "We can't do this. We can't do that." We want to throw out $25,000 to the Creamery Building.
Go ahead, Administrator.
During the Finance Committee meeting, the last Finance Committee meeting, there was not a degradation in the line item for vehicle purchase. That was avoided through due diligence. And we would anticipate that would be solidified at the next Finance Committee meeting. And that's all I can say at this point.
Can I make a point? Isn't the $25,000... That's the budget that's already been approved? It's not for the new budget?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So, if that's the budget that they've already got to pay for it?
And we did reduce the budget for next year from 25 to 10 on the Creamery, just as a sidebar note.
That is correct.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Thank you. If I might follow through with just the next item under new business, Item Number 3, it is a proposed lease for the Creamery Building between the village and the Historical Society. And this is for your review at this time. We do not anticipate action at this meeting as we would like to... I've had discussion with the Creamery or the Historical Society Committee. And we would like to just finalize some things that the attorney might need to put into this lease because the village has assets in that building that we need access to on any given date and/or time. So, we'd just like to memorialize that within the terms of the lease.
Makes sense.
Information only. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Any other trustees? Okay, we'll move on to open to the public non-agenda items. Please try to leave your comments for three minutes, but we've never said no. Please step forward.
Hi, my name's Paul Telly, 266...
Turn that mic up. That's it.
26624 South Anna. I had had a question about the last meeting. There was a, for new business approval of an application for consideration of a subdivision as a minor subdivision. If that could be explained to us, I wasn't really... Didn't really understand what that meant.
I'll do my best. The property owner owned a large parcel of land and wanted to carve off one lot and make it a separate lot. And that it was done through the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is a minor subdivision because it is less than, I believe it's less than 20 lots, classifies it as a minor subdivision. And that's the action that had taken place at the meeting.
Would this pertain to any particular... Any particular reason? Or does this have anything to do with the proposed truck stop?
No, this... There is a facility that is proposed on the lot that was established under the minor subdivision plat. There is a proposed... Actually, it's not proposed. There is a project that is slated to start there. And that is on the north of... On Ridgeland, north of Moni, Manhattan. I'm going to guess approximately 500 feet or so.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
And my next, what you guys were just talking about, the test well. That was... You said the bid was higher than expected because of the proposed tariffs on imported steel?
Yes. What we're getting, and this is just via our engineer's letter, what we're getting is the steel industry is feeling the pressure of those proposed tariffs. And thus, it's... Has driven the price up. That's one item. I believe you mentioned the prevailing wage increase. So, it's a labor increase. And the third major item that they cited in their letter, I believe, was the availability of the companies to drill those wells. For some reason, there's a lot of demand for that. And therefore, they raised their services, the prices of their services.
So, are they using imported steel? There are... It's... Or it has to do with... What is... Are they using imported steel?
I can't answer that. I have no idea. But the steel industry overall has felt the pressure.
Mr. Wallace, if I could, I think what the deal is there, Paul, that the steel industry, some things I was reading this week, is raising prices domestically because they anticipate demand to change, because they anticipate that the steel from China will drive... Will dry up. And as it dries up, there's going to be a higher demand for steel. So, the anticipation is that domestic steel will be higher because of that, which is what the idea behind the tariff is to begin with, I think.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Scott, 6430 Lakeway Drive. And I was just wondering if there is any update on the proposed truck stop, if there's been any further talks with Thornton or what... Where things stand with it?
At this time, there has been no additional conversation with Thornton. The plat, as it was presented, which is a conceptual review, site plan, was submitted and reviewed. And the ball is actually in their court at this point.
So, nothing set up?
Nothing, nothing since the last meeting.
Okay.
We're waiting for a response.
For them, okay. Is there anything else going on any of those three corners there? I noticed a few new stakes on the southeast corner, stakes with pink ties on them. Is there something going on on that corner?
No, that probably has to do with the project I just spoke of, which is further north on Ridgeland. They are staking... Some utilities will need to come from Moni, Manhattan, all the way up Ridgeland.
Okay, all right.
That's probably what they're staking.
And just curious, if anyone sitting up here lives on the west side of 57? Nobody does?
No.
So, nobody really knows what it's like for us over there with Amazon and why we're concerned about bringing a truck stop in when there's already another warehouse going in?
I don't mean to be in a negative tone, okay?
All right.
But we do. We know what's going on over there. We know the accidents that have happened and near misses and all that. And it's... We're still trying to rectify things, okay? It is what it is right now.
Oh, I know.
But there are things in plan. I am working to get Ridgeland Avenue as a county road because their pockets are deeper than ours. And I'm getting positive vibes on that. We're trying to do our due diligence so that that road can be improved, okay? At least Ridgeland Avenue, not Manhattan, Moni. So, we're turning through every avenue we can to improve things.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Heidi Gonzalez, 25634 South Defido Lane. And I actually don't have any questions. My reason for being here is actually an FYI for everyone here, up here and behind me, too. I'm here on behalf of the Moni Women's Club. And just wanted to let people know, and I tried to put it out there, I am this year's president of it, and just wanted to let you know some of the things or a lot of the things that the Moni Women's Club is planning and doing this year. First of all, going on right now is a fundraiser. We're doing geranium sales, which helps fund our scholarship, which is also, we have a scholarship applications out now to any Moni young lady, a graduating high school senior with a Moni address, and also for a woman who is going to continuing on education as well. We also partner with the American Legion almost every month. And we're helping them with their poppy sales on June 30th. We also do philanthropic efforts as well. This year, and once again, for our third year in a row, we're doing the Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society. Rebels with a Cause is our team. And hoping to do really well with that this year. And we also are one of the biggest groups in town for volunteerism efforts. We are called upon to do Fall Fest volunteers, the Christmas tree lighting, cookies and hot chocolate and what have you. And we also have a lot of, shall we say, the pulse of the village. There are 274 members of the Moni Women's Club right now, 274 women who live in the 60449 ZIP code. So, that being said, we are the largest organized group in the village. So, we are capable of moving and doing a lot. So, for anybody who wants to learn more about it, please see me after the meeting. Or we have a very active Facebook page, too, if you care to know about us, okay? Thank you. End of report.
Thank you.
Heidi, between you and Janet Blue, I can't keep up with yous, okay? You ladies are dedicated, okay? Thank you very much. Any other open... We have a gentleman coming.
Hello, my name's Mike Montgomery. I live at 4516 Azalea Avenue in the back of Country Meadows. And I guess I'm looking for some direction or maybe a request here. And maybe you guys can help direct me. I've been in the community probably about 16 years. I have two properties here, the one I live in and one I rent. And we have a pond behind the subdivision that we live in. So, there's about seven houses on the pond, five on one side and maybe two or three on the other. And it's, you know, it's great to have it back there. It's very beautiful. And one of the reasons that we bought in the subdivision and, you know, paid extra $5,000 per lot or whatever it was at the time. Well, the problem we're having now is, you know, I'm not a fisherman, right? Like, I might fish once a year, right? You know, the kids like to do it, but personally, that's not my gig. However, the pond's great. And we have a lot of Moni residents who come over and fish it, you know? And a lot of them, you get to meet and you know them by first name basis because, you know, they're basically around your backyard in some cases. However, we have a group that's recently started coming in the fall. And they will... They're from University Park. And they will camp the entire day on the pond fishing. They are very disrespectful. They are very abusive in their language. They'll leave garbage. Now, as a group on the pond, we mow down to the pond. We go walk the pond, pick up paper and garbage, you know, every year that blows in or gets left behind. And it's just very discouraging that... And the reason they do it is because they can take the fish. So, I guess my request is, how would we get the pond changed to a catch and release only? And I think that would solve a lot of the problems. But they will stay from morning... I mean, they're there right now, from morning till it's dark every single day, between one and five of them. And it's just, you know, we all have kids. Everybody's in the backyard. And you just have, you know, if they're Moni residents, great, you know what I mean? But they're not. They're not even from the community. And so, I guess I got stuck coming here today. I don't know how that happened, but there was supposed to be a couple of us. But I'm here. Just trying to get some direction from the board and you, Mr. Mayor. I can say I've only been up here in front of you guys once before, about eight years ago. So, it's not that I'm a big complainer or anything. But it's to the point of, they came back this spring and they just... They're going to be here all summer if we don't try to do something different than what we're doing.
Well, let us digest that a while. But let me say that the chief of police is sitting here right now. And he heard what you said.
Yeah, I mean, the police have been out several times.
Whatever Scott sees...
And I will share...
He could do, fine. But we need to discuss this.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And see what we can do about it. Catch and release, it's a thought, but that's a hard one to control.
But it gives me something, you know, it gives us something, right?
Signs and stuff.
I think that would chase them away.
We'll see if we can remedy that a little bit.
Sounds good. I appreciate your time.
We're here for you guys, okay?
Thank you.
I've said that a million times, so...
And I will share that one of the police officers, and I don't know their name, that was out this summer, had... Oh, they cut through yards and everything else, right?
Sure.
They just do whatever they want. And he kind of laughed. And he said, "You know, I know that guy. He's from University Park. That's how I know they're from University Park." He said, "His name's Jimmy." And he goes, "I can't say how I know him, but I just know that guy." You know, that kind of response. And so, that officer used to work for University Park.
Yeah, we've been dealing with a fence issue by Burger King. We have a lot of people going into that community. There's been some theft and just people that don't belong there, people bringing their dogs into that community through the opening in the fence.
I see.
So, we've been negotiating with Burger King to get that closed because it's their section. So, we actually put up a temporary fence at our cost, you know, just to try to keep them out until the permanent fence is put up, you know? So...
Yeah, and I'm thirsty cost for signage.
This is not new to us to have problems like this, okay?
I guarantee you, I would pay for it. I mean...
We will come up with something, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else open to the public? If not, we're going to be going into executive session for the business of collective bargaining, 51LCS 120/2C2. And for the purchase or lease of real property, 51LCS 120/2C5. And compensation of specific employees, 51LCS 120/2C1. So, we will be moving into executive session. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Blue?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. You can stick around. But I want to put these up over there so you can take some copies of this here.